Christ the King Church on West Esplanade in City of Kenner to lead us in the prayer.
Thank you. Let us pray. Almighty God, we lift before you all who govern this city. May they all understand and value their responsibility that is a trust from you to be used for service to every citizen. Dry from all of a cynicism, selfishness, and corruption. Grant in your mercy just and honest government and the desire to live together in unity and peace through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Ms. Foshee, could you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Chairman, you have a quorum this evening. In accordance with Council Resolution Number B 14550, please be advised that our cellular telephones, pagers, beepers, and other devices of this nature must be deactivated or silenced throughout the council meeting.
So I just want to start this meeting by with the comment and reading of some of the rules. A celebrity reminded us this week that it's important to be kind to one another. It's not, and it's not just those who you disagree with. I think it's important for all of us to do and always show respect to each other. As such, I would like to remind everyone that we have rules of debate and decorum. I'll be strictly adhering to those rules, especially Rule 42.1 and 42.2 going forward. Madam Clerk, can you please read them to ensure that we're all familiar with the rules?
Yes, ma'am. Order of Debate and Decorum of the Kenner City Council Rules. Rule 42.1, other than for the purpose of asking a question, no member shall speak more than once on the same question except by unanimous consent of the council, and then not until every other member desiring to speak shall have the opportunity to do so, provided however that the proponent of the matter under consideration or the chairman of the committee whose report is under consideration, as the case may be, shall have the right to open and close debate. No member shall speak longer than 10 minutes at any time except by majority consent of the council members present. And in closing debate on any question as above provided, the speaker shall be limited to five minutes except by majority consent of the council members present. The time limit and the right to speak only once shall not apply when a council member is required to answer questions. While a member is speaking, no member shall hold any private discourse. A council member who has not spoken on an issue and/or used all of his allotted time may yield all or a portion of his time to another council member. Rule 42.2, every member previous to his speaking, making a motion or seconding the same, shall address himself to the presiding officer and say, Mr. or Mrs. President, and shall not proceed with his remarks until recognized and named by the chair. He shall confine himself to the question under debate, avoiding personalities, and refrain from plunging the motives of any other member's argument or vote. Every member is also to refrain from personal attacks upon or in plunging the motives or character of any citizen, employee, or vendor addressing the council. In accordance with Resolution Number B 14820 adopted by the, adopted on October 21, 2004.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes. Do we have any motions, resolutions, or other items from the floor this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on. Under the consent agenda this evening, we have Item 1, approval of minutes, the regular council meeting of September 20, 2019. Item 2 is approval of alcoholic beverage permit applications. Item 2A is a resolution approving the application of Divine Mercy Catholic Church to conduct charitable games of pull tabs and raffle on October 11, 12, and 13, 2019 at 4337 Salantini Parkway in Kenner, Louisiana. Item 3 is approval of bingo and public gathering applications. Item 3A is application number 2189-19, Little Zion Missionary Baptist Church, to hold a public gathering on October 19, 2019, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. for the purpose of a community outreach at 2200 Kenner Avenue in Kenner, Louisiana. Item 3B is application number 2190-19, One Love United Methodist Church, to hold a public gathering on October 12, 2019, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. for the purpose of a trunk or treat at 1,000 Clay Street in Kenner, Louisiana. Item 4 is correspondence reports from the mayor, CAO, or department heads. Item 4A, at the request of the administration, a report from Mayor Zahn.
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Did some code sweeps this past week in District 1 with the help of Councilman Carroll's office. We went from, bear with me, it's a few different areas. On 29th Street, we went from 601 to 825, the 600 block to 800 block, the 600 block to 900 block of Veterans Boulevard, 2801 to 289 of Panama, 2800 to 2812 of Albany, 2800 block of Tupelo, and the 700 block to the 800 block of Jerry Drive. We were able to find 54 violations. Warning violations were 29, and court summons were three. I want to thank the Code Enforcement Department and also Councilman Carroll's office for helping us with that. Went then into District 4 on Lori Drive, Roan and Palmer, in Councilman Branigan's district, and with his help with his office, we did 28, we found 28 violations. Warning violations were 18, and court summons were zero. So up and down numbers there. Still with the help of the Code Department and these district council offices, we are getting code enforced. Visit Kenner actually got, for the second year in a row, the Convention South Reader's Choice Award. That is a magazine for convention trade. It is one, they are one of 337 in the U.S. out of 2,500 bureaus. So nominations were 2,500, and they got three, they were one of the 337. I think, I said that, I think that says a lot about what Visit Kenner, under Carolyn Barrett's guidance and her board, are doing for the City of Kenner. So obviously, her, her board, and her group are doing a great job. I want to thank Carolyn for that, and also for y'all's participation in that, because everything that we do helps us advertise the City of Kenner. They were also one in 23 in just this state. So only 23 in this state got it. The water bill issue, the parish council was here last week, and they talked about what we were gonna, what we could possibly do. I was able to work with Councilman Impostada's office, my office, and also Councilman Impostada's office, to address the water bills for Kenner residents. And just so you know, you might want to write this down, it starts, we've been putting this on Facebook, we did it through a press release, but just so the public knows, and you all know if you haven't seen it, it starts tomorrow at 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And then again next Friday, and next Saturday again, same times, 8:30 to 4:30, 10 to 4. That is in the Esplanade Mall, right outside of our Recreation Department slash Gymnastics Program, which is the Old Navy, right by that Macy's area. If you're familiar with it, what it looks like right now, since they shut Macy's down three or four years ago, it has a wall there, and that's where they're gonna be, right behind that. So anybody having a water bill issue still, if you have not, have not resolved it with Impostada's office, I would ask that you show up tomorrow. He's asking that with his office, and so am I with my office. So feel free to, you know, pass that on to all of our constituents. Today, a few of y'all made the flyover groundbreaking. We were visited by our governor, our state representative, I always want to say councilman, our state representative Joe Stagni, our state senator, was there, Gary Smith, a lot of you all were there, our aviation board appointment, Mr. Nicky Nicolosi, and also Gary Smith, Sr., were there, numerous people. Latoya Cantrell sent someone to be there. It's good news, guys. This is a huge project. We're getting it done. So they break, we broke ground today for what's about to come over the next three years, hopefully only three years, could be up to four years. I know it's, I know it's been a lot of work. Dr. Sean Wilson was there. I want to thank him for his cooperation with taking our calls, taking the parish, the Jefferson Parish's calls, the aviation board's calls, and working with the governor's office, and working with everyone involved in that. I recognize the ones that were there today, and thank you all for y'all's, you know, time and devotion to this, because I know you've taken a lot of calls on it, like, how am I gonna get in and out of the airport? Well, now we see something that's coming. And it's not just gonna impact District 1 and District 5, it's gonna impact every district, the whole City of Kenner, and the rest of the region. Everyone knows that this is important. I did point out, Councilman Carroll, though, that it's important to remember, when I spoke today, I said those words, but I also did say, but we're standing right in the spot where the city, the neighborhood that's gonna be impacted the most is right here. So I recognize Jackie Cochran for being there, and giving her input for coming to these council meetings, speaking to you, speaking to the rest of the council, and my administration, and me, our chief of police, to say, I have some problems there. So, you know, we can't, we can't forget that District 1's gonna have the biggest impact with District 5, but it does go throughout the city. Good news, a lot of things are happening in the City of Kenner. We just gotta keep pushing through and moving forward, and I appreciate all of y'all's support on that flyover, and also the state's support. That's it.
Thank you, Mayor Zahn. Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mayor, for that information as it relates to that, and thank Pastor Cochran for coming out for that. You are correct, as far as it, as far as the, the bulk of the districts that will receive the day-to-day stuff, it will be District 1. This is a marathon, not a dash. So it is something that we, as a city, has to, have to attack together. If not, it's gonna affect all of, all of us individually at a different level. So we look forward to that, look forward to the work with the director, look forward to Mayor Cantrell, and everybody that's dealing with it, along with our Code Department, who has been, you know, some of the unspoken heroes as it relates to some of the construction, and some of the things that, you know, should have been addressed early on. But that's behind us now. We have to look forward, and we look forward to the support for that. Also, I'd like to thank Mr. Mohammed for his, for the guys and the ladies, for the code, for the sweep in the Susan Park slash Veteran Heights area. A couple of meetings ago, I mentioned that, because District 1 is not contiguous like most of, like all of the districts, there are different pockets that people sometimes feel as if they're not getting the bulk, or not getting a lot of the attention from the different services. But that's not the case. So this shows that we are as on it as from District 1 and South Kenner, as it is in what I call Central Kenner. So I've gotten three or four calls from the ladies that live, who have been living there for over 40 years, in the Susan Park area, who are glad to see that. They, they only asked that, listen, it's something that's gonna happen, and if we can do it on a quarterly basis or whatever, it is something that they would like to see, because there are a lot of younger families there that have not lived there as long as they have, and they would like for those younger families to understand that they're not trying to be a thorn, anything, but they just want them to be able to take care of the neighborhood like they have for the past 40 years. So thanks again, Ms. Mohammed, thanks for all your crew, and we look forward to the continuous work for, from Code, for the Veteran Heights, Susan Park area. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Mayor Zahn?
And I apologize, it was not on my list, and that's why I skipped something very important coming up on Tuesday evening. I'm gonna pass it on to our chief of police, who is going to obviously be the guy spearheading what happens on Tuesday evening. That's not out against crime. Chief Glazer.
Great. Thank you. You're gonna get Chief Glazer to speak?
It's, it's challenging, but sometimes, you know, the string doesn't always work this far, but we'll see how it works.
They only speak on important things. Got you. Like the mayor said, this Tuesday, October 15th, is the national, the local national night out against crime. Parties throughout the city we have. We change it, as I say every year, from August, when it's unbearable to be outside, to when it's supposed to be a little cooler, but we're not gonna, I don't think we're gonna get much cooler. But it is, next Tuesday the 15th. If anyone has a party that would like us to stop by, recognize, talk, this is designed for neighborhoods to meet and speak to police personnel, and tell us about, get to know them better, tell us about any concerns in the neighborhood. So it goes a long way. We have upwards of 30 of them scheduled already. If anyone has one planned and hasn't registered with my office yet, please do. And as always, by Monday, your offices will have a list of all the, the parties, in case y'all wanna drop by. And this coming Sunday, October 13th, is the kickoff party to the National Night Out Against Crime in Laughery Park we have. It's from 2:00 to 6:00. Everything is free. There'll be demonstrations from SWAT teams, K-9 units, and I believe we even have a fire demo this year with the Kenner Fire Department. The band Karma plays. They'll have food and refreshments, and we have commitments from all area law enforcement, local federal, local state and federal will be there. So if you want to see some of the latest gadgets law enforcement uses these days, it's a good time to come out and see. I can't promise, but I'm sure one of them will have the Saints game playing, because I don't know how they put these things up against NFL football. But it is, it's, it's this Sunday, 2:00 to 6:00 at Laughery Park, and everything is free. So if you can come, make it a point to stop by.
Thank you, Chief Glazer. Thank you, Mayor Zahn. I think, I've been through the past two years, and if you could just make sure the weather cooperates, and it's about 70 degrees, I'll definitely be there this, on Sunday. Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Chief, for that information. And it's always good when we have these events, community events particularly, for the neighbors to come out to, to recognize one another. Some of them may be new, like I said before, new neighbors. But I had gotten a couple of questions from people as it relates to the night out against crime. One being, you know, could they have one, or could they start one? Was it regulated by the City of Kenner? And the answer is no. This is a national community out event for everyone to participate. And so if you and your neighborhood would like to do it, as the chief said, please forward the information to us, and we will put you on, make you number 31, or however many more we're gonna get. And number two, the question was, as far as being a fee. There is no fee. The City of Kenner has a couple of facilities that will be holding night outs, as we have for the past 20 years, that I know of. And if you want to be part of that, obviously you have to contact the coordinators of it. But there is no fee, there is no money that the city is charging for you to participate in this event. It is for you, it is for our community. So that's, that would be ridiculous to even, to even think that. But people want to know and to make sure, so the 15th, October, all over the city, if you want to start one, please feel free to do it. If you want to participate in others, that, we're looking forward to that, too. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Mayor Zahn, you don't have anything, you're finished?
Okay. That will conclude the consent agenda. If I could get a motion in a second?
Motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes 7-0. Under the public appearance agenda, we have Item 9, public hearings for final passage. Item 9A is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number 12,596, an ordinance approving the sale of a 12,490.34 square foot portion of unimproved property and a 14,634.97 square foot portion of unimproved property, both located in Square 95, Kenner Orchids subdivision.
Motion by Councilmember Segura, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot, to open public hearing. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes 7-0.
Planning?
Yes, we do, Madam President. Thank you. This is an application to purchase these two pieces of property by Orchard Properties, 1,002 Duncan Street, Kenner, Louisiana, 70062. The two sections of unimproved property in Square 95 are generally bounded by 10th Street to the south, unimproved 11th Street to the north, unimproved Duncan Street to the west, and unimproved Maria Street to the east. The Butch Dewey Playground is situated between the two properties in Square 95. The applicant, Troy Pearson, actually owns the business located between the two properties on the south side, and is planning to purchase the properties to expand his business and create more storage. The, an appraisal of the property was done in, I'm sorry, on May 16, 2019, by Wayne Sandoz and Associates. He identified the value of the 14,634 square foot portion at 87,800, and the value of the 12,490-foot square foot portion at 22,500. The applicant has agreed to purchase both portions of Square 95 for their appraised values, and the Planning Commission recommended approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this matter? Seeing none, motion by Councilmember Segura, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot, to close the public hearing. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes 7-0.
Motion by Councilmember Segura, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot, to approve. Council members, please vote.
One more? Motion passes 7-0. Item 10 is opening of bids. We have none. Item 11 is reclassification for zone, of zoning for final passage. Item 11A is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number 12,593, an ordinance to amend Article 5 definitions, Article 6 zoning, and Article 12 supplementary use and performance standards of the United Development Code for the City of Kenner and Chapter 10 licenses and taxation of the Kenner Code of Ordinances to promote the health, safety, and general welfare by establishing where short-term rental is appropriate, and definitions, standards, and licensing requirements for short-term rental establishments, and providing for related matters, including enforcement provisions to address violations. Madam, Madam Chairman, I have a request for a two-meeting deferral. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Brennan, on a two-meeting deferral. Seeing no discussion, council members, please vote. Motion passes 6-1. Councilmember Hayes is opposed. Item 11B is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number 12,594, an ordinance amending ordinance number 11,062, adopted by the City of Kenner, Louisiana, on March 17, 2016, entitled United Development Code of the City of Kenner, Louisiana, more particularly amending and rezoning parcel D4 through A3 Highway Park subdivision from C2 General Commercial to LD Lake Town District, and directing, authorizing, empowering the planning directive for the City of Kenner to alter and amend the official zoning map of the City of Kenner.
Motion by Councilmember Hayes, seconded by Councilmember McKenney, to open public hearing. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes 7-0.
Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council? Seeing none, motion by Councilmember Hayes, seconded by-
We have a presentation, I believe, by the planning-
Oh, I apologize.
That's okay.
It wasn't written on the agenda. I apologize. Sorry.
Thank you, Madam President. The property owner is Onezym Holdings LLC, Post Office Box 640790, Kenner, Louisiana, 70064. The applicant in the case is RCL Architecture LLC, 900 West Causeway Approach, Mandeville, Louisiana, 70471. The petition property fronts Horseshoe Road and is generally bounded by the Ponchartrain Center to the north, Williams Boulevard to the east, Joe Yanni Boulevard to the south, and the Duncan Canal to the west. The site is currently undeveloped, and the property owner is requesting the rezoning in order to likely build multifamily apartments or condominiums. On Monday, August 12, at the Hispanic Resource Center, the applicant conducted an early neighborhood notice meeting. He indicated that three people attended the meeting, and no one attending expressed any opposition to the proposed rezoning. Parcel D5, located adjacent west of the site, is governed by special ordinances 7601 and 9216, which allow development of a senior living facility. Site is currently developed as Lake Town Village. The parcel D-A4, located adjacent to the east, is owned Lake Town District, is owned by the City of Kenner, and is currently undeveloped. To the north, parcels C and D4B, parcel C is undeveloped, zoned RR1, single-family residential, and is location of the Duncan Canal Pumping Station. Parcel D4-B is owned by the City of Kenner, and is owned Lake Town District, and includes the Ponchartrain Center complex and parking. Parcel D4-A8-A is located to the south across Horseshoe Road, Zone C2, and is developed as the Fairgrounds Off-Track Bedding Casino. In 1991, Parcel D was resubdivided to create what is now known as Lot D4-A3, as well as Horseshoe Road. The planned unit development portion of Parcel D was rescinded, rescinded. All of the newly created lots from Parcel D were zoned C2, and Lot D4-A3 has retained that zoning until present day. The Pattern for Progress Comprehensive Future Land Use Plan identifies Lot D4-A3 as Parks Recreation and Open Space designation given to land close to Lake Town in order to encourage uses that would support the development of the Lake Town area. Rezoning this land to Lake Town District would support the intent of the comprehensive plan in developing uses in close proximity to Lake Town that would enhance its overall development as a city and region-wide active destination. And the Planning Commission did recommend approval for this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this matter? Motion by Councilmember Hayes, seconded by Councilmember McKenney, to close public hearing. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes 7-0.
Motion by Councilmember Hayes, seconded by Councilmember McKenney, to approve. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes 7-0. Item 11C is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number 12,595, an ordinance to amend Article 5 definitions and Article 6 zoning to establish a definition for animal shelter, and to further establish animal shelter as a conditional use in single-family residential, two-family residential, three- and four-family residential, multifamily, industrial, and commercial zoning districts within the City of Kenner.
Motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember Segura, to open public hearing. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes 7-0.
And the planning director has a presentation for this.
I do, Madam President. Very, very brief. This, currently, the city does not have a definition for animal shelter, or any zoning districts in which animal shelter is listed as either permitted or conditional. Proposed ordinance established a definition for animal shelter that reads as follows, "A facility operated for the purpose, purposes of impounding, harboring, selling, placing, and retrieving seized, strayed, distressed, homeless, abandoned, and/or unwanted animals. Animal shelters may include incidental activities such as vaccination, training classes, training classes, spay-neuter services, boarding services, accessory retail sales, and full veterinary, veterinary services." This use classification also includes the following, "An animal control agency or shelter, society for the prevention of cruelty to animals shelter, humane society shelter, or rescue group." The ordinance further identifies where animal shelters will be listed as a conditional use, and these will include residential, commercial, and industrial districts. However, the Planning Commission, at the Planning Commission meeting, recommended denial based on, they did not think it was appropriate to include animal shelters in residential districts.
This piece gets amended.
Yeah.
That concludes-
Thank you. We have, Madam Clerk, do we have an amendment for this?
Will we close the hearing?
Okay.
I will introduce it for you.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council? Motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember Segura, to close the public hearing. Council members, please vote.
Motion passes 7-0. I have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember Segura, for approval. Madam Chairman and members of the council, we have an amendment this evening for this item. If we could, the amendment will include deleting Sections 2 through 5 out of the ordinance. The remaining sections will be numbered 1 through 8. I have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember Segura on the amendment. Do we have a discussion on the amendment tonight?
Yes. Councilmember Branigan.
Ed, did you want to talk about this change that we're putting in?
The, the sections that we are deleting out are all the sections that would allow it as a conditional use in residential sections. So once you, if you approve the, these amendments, then it will only be a conditional use in all, in the commercial or industrial zoning districts. It removes the complaint or the concern of the planning- It removes the complaint or the concern of the planning commission by removing it, if you approve the amendment, by removing it from all residential districts.
Councilmember Carroll.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Attorney. That was my question to find out, because since we've never had an animal shelter legislation about it, what it was, what it means, I think this, to move it out of the residential area is something good for the community, particularly since it's a first-time event. So, I will be supporting the amendment to move it out of there and leave it in the other areas. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, councilmembers.
Again, the amendment is motion by Councilmember Brannigan, seconded by Councilmember Segura. Councilmembers, please vote on the amendment. Motion passes seven zero to amend. You're back to your original motion as amended. No discussion. Councilmembers, please vote. Motion passes seven zero. Item twelve is other ordinances for final passage. We have none. Item thirteen is resolutions and motions by councilmembers. Item thirteen A is a resolution exercising the first one-year renewal of the July sixth, two thousand fifteen audit contract with Du Planchet, Ratman, Hogan, and Mayer, LLP.
Motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot, to approve. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero. Item thirteen B is a resolution requesting the Kenner City Council review the finding of fact and recommendations of the Alcoholic Beverage Permit Review Committee pertaining to HF Hookah LLC doing business as LVLZ, located at twenty-eight twenty Loyola Drive in Kenner, Louisiana.
Motion by Councilmember Carroll, seconded by Councilmember Brennan. Do we have any, Councilmember Carroll?
Thank you, Madam President, and, you know, we don't have that many times that we have legislation like this. So, if we, either from the chief or either from the attorney's office, to give us and give the audience a little information on what we are addressing, why we are addressing it, and as the seat of Kenner, the position that it is, we feel it is something should go forward.
Chief Glazer.
Yes, earlier this year, we started receiving complaints from various business owners about this establishment on Loyola, about the crowds, became a nuisance, the, I guess, the urination on neighboring businesses, and it trash the next morning. And then, when we looked into it further and started following up on calls for service, through the summer months, we have an increase of calls for service. And it was alarming when I found out that the business had hired private security who were carrying long guns, which is a rifle. So, whenever you're running an establishment that you feel a need that you have to employ private security guards that carry rifles, that in itself should cause alarm to anybody in the City of Kenner. We've had, it's late night, you know, after hours, when some of the bars out west in the La Pla Saint John, Saint Charles area close, this bar becomes popular. And a large crowd spill into the drink, anywhere from fights to aggravated assaults to, we've had several homicides lead back, not in the City of Kenner, but outside of the City of Kenner, lead back where the victims just left the bar, where they were shot at on interstate or an island highway. So, we had several policemen testify on September thirtieth in front the Alcoholic Beverage Permit Review Committee, and their finding of fact, I would hope you would agree with it.
Thank you, Chief, and I have received, I agree with you one hundred percent. I've received a number of calls, emails, stopping men in a supermarket to talk about this, this hookah bar, and the number of complaints about trash. I did not know about the security with long guns, but the trash every morning where the business owner would have to go out there and pick up all the trash late in the mornings. I've ridden out there at one o'clock, two o'clock in the morning to see it. And as you said, our neighbors to the west, everything shuts down between one and two o'clock. So, if you're young and you feel you still have some energy left in it, you're just going to gravitate to the seat of Kenner. And it is a situation that the owner, I believe, knew about some of the things that were going on. I don't believe it was addressed appropriately, and I feel that had it been, he could have had an opportunity to address it. And I, listen, we're not anti-business anything, but when it comes to the quality of life of the people that we live next to and with, it is something that we have to address. So, I look forward to going forward with the recommendation from the board. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Carroll. Councilmember Wilmot?
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to ask Legal, if they could, just tell us what the recommendations are of the Alcohol Board.
The recommendations from the Alcohol Board are that you revoke all the alcohol beverage licenses from this organization.
And is that, that in effect, what will be happening if we vote yes?
That is correct.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilmot. Do we have any, anyone else wishing to make any comments?
Hearing none. Councilmembers, please vote. Madam Chairman, motion passes seven zero to approve. Item fourteen is items removed from the consent agenda. We have none. Item fifteen is acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item fifteen A is summary ordinance number twelve thousand six oh two. An ordinance accepting the responsive bid received from Gus Willie Apparel LLC to provide football and volleyball uniforms on an as-needed basis in accordance with letter bid number nineteen dash fifteen eighty-seven and an amount not to exceed twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars annually for the Department of Parks and Recreation.
Motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Brannigan, to approve. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen B is summary ordinance number twelve thousand six oh three. An ordinance authorizing the use of existing Jefferson Parish contract number four four zero 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 one 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 two four with Ozark Materials LLC to purchase thermoplastic markings on an as-needed basis not to exceed fifty thousand dollars annually for the Department of General Services.
Motion by Councilmember Hayes, seconded by Councilmember Brannigan, to approve. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen C is summary ordinance number twelve thousand six oh four. An ordinance authorizing the use of Louisiana State Contract Number four four zero 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 five four one seven, four four zero 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 eight five seven zero, and four four zero 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 one five one eight two, with vehicle parts and equipment incorporated to provide light bars and sirens and an amount not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars.
Motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember McKenney, to approve. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen D is summary ordinance number twelve thousand six oh five. An ordinance ratifying the purchase of a new Holland Workmaster sixty tractor and bush hog rotary mower and the amount of twenty-six thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars and thirty-six cents from Chauvin Brothers Tractor Incorporated utilizing state contracts number four four zero 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 one zero two three one and four four zero 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 nine nine zero three for the Departments of Parks and Recreation.
Motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Carroll, to approve. Councilmembers, please vote.
Madam Chairman, I have an amendment this evening. If we could, please entertain this amendment. At the request of the Finance Department, we are changing the last account number and the fourth, whereas, from three seven five five zero 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 dash fifty-nine forty dash twelve thirty to three five four eight zero eight five dash five zero zero nine dash one 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 three. I have a motion to amend by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Carroll on the amendment this evening. Any discussion on the amendment? Councilmembers, please vote. Motion passes seven zero to amend. Back to your original motion as amended. No discussion. Councilmembers, please vote. Motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen E is summary ordinance number twelve thousand six oh six.
Ford dealerships, albeit on certain different types of vehicles, from police units to pickup trucks to, you know, even heavier trucks. So, this is a citywide cap of a million dollars, and if the mayor wants to give me another million, we'll buy a bunch of police cars. But, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, so, motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Carroll, to approve. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen I is summary ordinance number twelve thousand six ten. An ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Jack B Harper Electrical LLC to provide repair of traffic signal systems in accordance with sealed bid number nineteen dash sixty-four ninety-nine and an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars annually for the Department of Public Works.
Councilmember, Councilmember Brennan? No?
It wasn't worth it a moment ago. Sorry.
Okay, that's okay. Motion by Councilmember Carroll, seconded by Councilmember Segura, to approve. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen J is summary ordinance number twelve thousand six eleven. An ordinance approving change order number one through seven, final to the construction agreement with Barriere Construction Company LLC dated August seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, regarding Williams Boulevard and US sixty-one intersection improvement, state project number H period zero one one four five seven, federal aid project number H zero one one four five seven, Kenner Public Works number two thousand fourteen dash zero one one C dash CIP, decreasing the contract amount by thirty-seven thousand five hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty cents and increasing the contract time by thirteen working days, and accepting the contract as complete by the Department of Public Works.
Motion by Councilmember Carroll, seconded by Councilmember Brennan, to approve. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen K is a resolution approving change order number three to the agreement with Barriere Construction Company LLC dated November twentieth, two thousand seventeen, regarding the New Orleans Airport Connector Road, state project number H period zero one one two seven six, federal aid project number H zero one one two seven six, Kenner Public Works project number two thousand fourteen dash zero zero three dash A R B, for an increase to the contract amount by one million three hundred and seventy-five thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents, and increase of contract by one hundred and sixteen calendar days for the Department of Public Works.
Councilmember Wilmot?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Schreiner, I just had a quick question. If you can, first off, describe this project, where it's at and what it does.
The project is, is the, this is the Connector Road project. You were out there earlier today. You may have noticed that some of the asphalt isn't been put down. That would be the wearing course. We're waiting for that AT&amp;T vault to be completely lowered. You may have seen a hole close to veterans. Once that's complete, then they'll, Barriere will remobilize to the site and put all the remaining asphalt out. So, it'll take them approximately seven days, once that, once that hole is filled up.
And I see that the amount of money here we're looking at is one point three. That, those funds, I presume, are mostly federal dollars. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Is all of it, or?
No, ours is probably about five percent of that.
Okay. All right. Real good. That's, I appreciate that explains it. Thank you very much. Well needed. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilmot. Councilmember Carroll?
Thank you, Madam President, but Councilmember Wilmot asked the questions that I were going to ask. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Carroll. Motion by Councilmember Brannigan, seconded by Councilmember Segura, to approve. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero. Item sixteen is ordinances and resolutions in summary for first reading. Item sixteen A is an ordinance approving the lease of the existing building and improvements located on portions of lot W dash three, plot H, Kenner Orleans subdivision, Kenner Jefferson Parish, Louisiana, bearing the municipal address of four oh two Williams Boulevard, as shown on the attached survey by BFM Corporation dated March fourteenth, two thousand seventeen. Item sixteen B is an ordinance approving the planned resubdivision of lots B dash two and B dash three into lot B dash two A, which lots are owned by the North Kenner Investors LLC, and amending ordinance twenty forty-seven to allow the addition of a single twenty-four unit apartment building to the existing planned unit development located on new lot B dash two A, Highway Park subdivision in Kenner, Louisiana. Item sixteen C is an ordinance amending the Kenner City Code of Ordinances, Chapter five, Article four, flood damage ordinance, to revise the definitions of flood zones in accordance with new Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA updates to reflect changes in the FEMA-approved and adopted flood insurance risk maps, incorporate modifications with the FEMA Community Rating System, and to provide for related matters. Item sixteen D is an ordinance approving the use of state contracts numbers four four zero 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 one four five 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 and four four zero 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 one four seven two six, and a financing agreement with Motorola Solutions Incorporated for the purchase of portable radios for a cost not to exceed six hundred and thirty-three thousand fifty-six thousand twenty-three cents. Item sixteen E is an ordinance authorizing the administration to utilize existing state contract number four four zero 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 five seven eight one with the Han Company to purchase office furniture and other related items through G B P Direct for the City of Kenner Department citywide. Item sixteen F is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid to provide food service for the Kenner Police Department jail facility in accordance with sealed bid number nineteen dash sixty-five oh eight four and amount not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Item sixteen G is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from D R N's Corporation to supply uniforms citywide in accordance with sealed bid number nineteen dash sixty-five oh six and an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars for the Department of General Services. Item sixteen H is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Parets Men's Wear Incorporated for the purchase of uniforms and related services on an as-needed basis in accordance with sealed bid number nineteen dash sixty-five oh seven and an amount not to exceed eighty thousand dollars annually for the Kenner Police Department. Item sixteen I is an ordinance accepting the responsive bid received from Jack B Harper Electrical LLC and an amount not to exceed five thousand forty-three dollars and thirty cents to replace mast arm base and signals at three oh six Loyola Drive in accordance with telephone bid number T nineteen dash twenty-seven oh two for the Department of Public Works. Item sixteen J is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bids received from Riddle All-American and B S N Sports LLC to provide football and volleyball equipment on an as-needed basis in accordance with bid number nineteen dash fifteen eighty-six and an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars annually for the Parks and Recreation Department. Item sixteen K is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Bonna Venture Incorporated to purchase various round hydrant markers for city fire hydrants in accordance with bid number nineteen dash fifteen eighty-eight and an amount not to exceed six thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars for the Kenner Fire Department. Item seventeen is reports from the council and our special committees. Madam Chairman, if we could right now, we could recognize Mr. Ed Rapier, the city attorney. He would like to make an announcement. Please.
This goes back to the item-
Eleven A.
Eleven A. One of the reasons for the deferral is that there are some proposed amendments. We have copies. As we've been keeping the citizens apprised of the issues with the proposed ordinance, there are some proposed amendments. We do have copies, and so, any citizen here who would like copies, I have, I'll put them on the table over there. If we run out, we'll certainly provide copies to anybody who needs them. And we just blew through that-
Yes.
-deferral quicker, and I didn't get to make mention of that at the time.
Thank you, Mr. Rapier.
Is there any other councilmembers that would like to speak on the item seventeen?
Councilmember Brennan.
Thank you, Councilchair. Just to remind everyone about the importance of voting this Saturday. Polls are open until eight o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brennan. And they open, they open at six in the morning. Councilmember Carroll?
Thank you, Madam President, and I would like to thank the administration, particularly Ms. Fauché, the General Service, for the support that we had in- Ms. Fauchet, the General Service, for the support that we had in Rivertown last weekend for the STEAM, STEM program, and S T E A M, Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts and Math. And it was a cooperation of some of the vendors from the city of Kenner, some high schools, bondable and elementary school and middle schools, for an opportunity to, to show, you know, we're going in the technology age, and we want to, everybody put their, their support into it and to, it came out well, but we expected to get better next time. We had the state space, Ms. Fauchet, correct, the NASA, the astronaut. Representative districts, and I think if we do that, it will encompass all of the city. So we look forward to it again, and thank everybody again, like I said before, for you guys, for your help. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Carroll. Anyone else? Thanks.
Item eighteen is new business, we have none. Item nineteen is unfinished business and are motions to reconsider or remove from the tabled position, we have none. Item twenty is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters.
Yes. First person on the list is Robbie Bassino, if you would like to approach. If you, if you, actually, over there, if you just say your name and your address for the record.
Robbie Bassino, eighty-nine oh one I N S Drive, River Ridge.
Thank you. You have three minutes.
And I'm going to speak on his behalf, I'm his attorney Laura Rodriguez, I also signed the list. We are here today on behalf, I'm here on today, today on behalf of the union members, and in particular, Mr. Bassino in the matter. He has been elected by the members of the department to serve as the member of the Civil Service Board, the fire representative. This matter came before this board at a prior hearing, and all of the other members of the Civil, of the Civil Service Board were appointed. For some reason that was not relayed to us and was not given publicly before the board, the matter was deferred. We are here because in the law that lays out the process for appointing the civil service members, there is no discretion in appointing the member if he meets the qualifications and after he has been elected by the other firefighters. So we are asking this board to go ahead and authorize him to serve the position which he has already been elected and for which he satisfies all of the requirements, because there has been no reason given why he has not been authorized and given the, I guess, the authority by the board to sign on, or why the matter was deferred.
Would the administration like to address?
You should finish.
Ma'am, are you finished? Would you like to yield your time to, for Ms. Fauchet? Okay, are you?
I can, I'll reserve the rest of my time and speak after Ms. Fauchet. I don't want to get into a debate, I'll be happy to comment when she's finished.
Ma'am, if, if you're, right now, if you can say, if, if you're finished, she's, I guess she did, as she said, she doesn't want to have a back and forth, so if she's going to answer any of your questions and have any comments, but you'll be giving up your, the rest of your time.
Okay. I have signed also after Mr. Bassino, as well as other firefighters, so I'll respond after. I am finished for this portion of the comments, thank you.
Can I yield your time?
Miss President, the rules do not allow the, the, the deferring of time to other members, so Ms. Canizaro has her three minutes and her three minutes only.
Well, I guess the position, and again, obviously, there's an issue that the attorneys who represent this administration have not ever provided my client with a reason why they asked this board to defer. And I would have to assume that this board probably has no idea why they were asked to defer the appointment of Mr. Bassino. It is mandated by law that this board appoint him to the position he was elected, there is simply no discretion. The only option, or the only remedy now that the law allows is to ask the district court to issue a mandamus to the board ordering them to follow the law as it's written. Obviously, this is an ongoing issue that the firefighters are having with the fire department, they are currently under an injunction right now by the district court. We obviously can't, they never gave a reason to my client for why he wasn't affirmed or why this board was asked to defer, that wasn't presented at the hearing. So until the reason is given on the record, there would be no way for us to respond, we haven't heard why it was deferred in the first place, there's no legal remedy, there's no legal basis for the deferral. There's no, there's simply no discretion of the board. It's merely a signature, once he's elected by his peers and he meets the requirements. So it's very confusing, and I think that this board deserves an answer why they were asked to defer, my client deserves an answer, and all of the other firefighters here deserve an answer as to why their representative was not allowed or is not being allowed to serve on the board. And the only remedy after that, if he's not confirmed, is to ask the court to issue yet another injunction on the city of Kenner.
Thank you, Ms. Rodri, if you, Ms. Fauchet, if you can respond to that, and if we have any questions, we'll respond.
Is my microphone on? Okay, so, Ms., I'm sorry, Rodri?
Ms. Rodri.
Ms. Rodri, you appear to be the only person who has no idea why this happened, because this conversation was had with this council and was had with your client in the hall at the last council meeting. It was brought, may I finish? It was brought to our attention the day of the meeting that there had been two prior applicants. We could not, on the day of the meeting, make a determination whether we needed to consider the two prior applicants or not. After having that conversation, this board deferred it for two meetings, so he's back on the agenda in two weeks, and in the meantime, he continues to serve. In addition, I contacted, who else was in the hall with me, Mickey, and asked, could I please have Mr. Bassino's phone number so I could call him and explain that to him? Mickey said he gave him the message and he never returned my phone call. Mickey also said he would not give me the number because he was afraid he was going to get counseled for doing so. So I have done everything I can to reach out to your client, everybody on this council knows exactly why, we were trying to make sure that everyone had a fair chance. He will be up for a vote next time. A misstatement that you made is that everyone else was approved, there was no one else to approve, he was the only one on the agenda. The final statement that you made that is false is you represent the union, there is no union.
Well, you, I think, just out of a correction, I said all the other members.
Yes, ma'am, you're, unfortunately, you're out of time.
Well, Your Honor, excuse me, with the response that I?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, ma'am, if you could, we need to move on, I apologize. If you can have a, after the meeting, maybe we can talk about, you know, privately, so.
Point of order.
Yes.
If there are other firemen that would like, I mean, if they signed up to speak, then they are more than welcome to speak also, I don't want to, Ms., she has spoken, and that's the rules, but if there are other firemen who like to speak, we don't want to shun you also. If you want to speak, then you have the right to speak also.
Well, if we could, we can't yield their time, and if they're, if they haven't signed up yet, we would, we would do, we'll allow them to, to talk at the end of the list, because there are other people who've signed up.
Do you want me to address at the end of the meeting?
Yeah, we could, we have one, two, three, four, five, six more speakers, and you can speak after that, sir.
I believe he's on the list, is what he was saying.
Oh, okay, if you're on the list.
Jeruso?
Yes, after Mr. Morella. Mr. Morella, please state your name and address.
Al Morella, forty-two sixty, East Loyola Drive, Fifth District, forty-seven years. First of all, I'd like to say, let's keep the Liberto family in our thoughts and prayers, the police officer who lost his life so tragically in the line of duty in Mandeville. Now, I want to talk about an article, this, this fed right to my topic, in, in The Advocate on September thirty, four fire chiefs in three years, lawsuit pending against the city by our fire department. For years, I've been standing at this podium, talking about how I always believed that the fire chief in this city should be in an elected position, not an appointed one. Now, I guess everybody can see why. Now, I didn't got the word out of Baton Rouge, and the word out of Baton Rouge is it would simply take a charter change, four point one nine, section four point one nine of the city charter. So this is what I'm getting out of Baton Rouge. So if this is the case, I challenge this council to put legislation on the table and let the voters decide whether or not they want to remain with the status quo, four fire chiefs in three years, I repeat it, lawsuit on top of lawsuit, injunctions on top injunctions against the city of Kenner, then so be it. But I think the people, I'm for one, I'm not satisfied, I'm very displeased at what's going on with our firefighters. And I want to say this, our employees, our employees are probably the greatest resource, the most valuable resource we have in this city. And I could tell you something right now, without them, none of you all would be in business up there, we wouldn't even be a city. And I think it's high time, especially our first responders, I think it's high time we start acting like it, we started treating, we started treating them like they're supposed to be treated. And I want to commend the workers and the field supervisor and the public works department who came out today and put those signs up, designated in one way on Sunset and East Loyola. I want to commend them. And I'll tell you what, I for one, value our employees as our, as our greatest resource we have in this town. And I'd like to see this body, the administration and the, and the legislative, the administrative branch and the legislative branch start recognizing and start taking an attitude toward our employees just like I'm talking about right now. And I want to reiterate what Councilman Brennan said earlier, if you haven't voted early, if you haven't voted yet, get outside of the in vote. This is the only way we're ever going to get any change and make things better. Anybody got any comments, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morella. Councilmember Segura, do you, would you like to have any comments?
I did before, but I'll pass, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Brennan?
Thank you, Councilchair. Mr. Morella, I would like to say something in regard to your comments about the employees of the city. I, I know on a regular basis, I, I try to give accolades personally, I try to call them, I try to send them correspondence, and I know what happens with the other council members as well. So I don't think our employees are overlooked by any means, they are absolutely an asset, and yes, they keep us looking good in many, many cases, but it's, it's not forgotten and it's not overlooked, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brennan. Anyone else? Michael, Michael Jeruso, please state your name and your address for the record.
Michael Jeruso, one twenty-three Oaklawn Ridge Lane, St. Rose, District Chief with the Kenner Fire Department, I'm also the union president that we don't have. At the last meeting, it was deferred to make Robbie Bassino in a position, it wasn't made public at this meeting why they wanted it deferred. Ms. Fauchet did talk to me out in the lobby about, they had two other guys that did not meet the qualifications of the state's law to run, and she said, had they known that, they would have pushed to get it changed to allow somebody from anywhere in the state of Louisiana to run, to sit on the civil service board. So if she wants a change, if she can, but the election was already held, the other two had to withdraw their name because they don't live in Jefferson Parish, that left one person on the board. Apparently, they don't want him to sit on the board, and it's Robbie Bassino. So if they're going to push to change the fire department's representative that could sit, live anywhere in the state of Louisiana, I suggest that they do that with the whole city council, the mayor, and all, let everybody that lives in the state of Louisiana run for the positions here. It just seems like it's a constant fight over stuff that's, that's law, and then they want to change it after the fact. I, I don't know what to tell them.
Was it?
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Rapier?
Never mind.
Oh, okay. Ms. Alessandro? If you could state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Stacy Alessandro, thirty-three oh nine, Chateau Boulevard. First comment I want to make is that I don't particularly like the fact that the citizens only get three minutes to come up here and speak, which, that's fine, we have to sit through the entire council meeting, sometimes that's our only voice, is three minutes to come up here and say quickly what we have to say. And then if we ask a question, ninety-nine percent of the time, we don't get an answer, which is also, that's fine, but I don't like the fact that when we come up here on our time to make our point, that other people are able to respond and rebut us, and then we have to walk off. This is our time to make a point. I would like to propose that y'all consider making some kind of rule that if a person comes up here and it's the citizens, three minutes to speak, that if they have been rebutted, that they get an additional minute or two. Anyway, barring that, I want to say I'm sick of the shenanigans that are happening with this fire department. This man was elected by his peers in the fire department, he's the only one of the three people that were nominated that lives in the city of Kenner, which the rules say you have to live in the city of Kenner. His, I'm, the, 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 the,
The, the real issue is that the initial vote, the initial call for the election, had the wrong information. And that was the issue, that one of the issues that was being looked into is to see, because of the fact that the call for the election had incorrect information, whether it was, in fact, a legitimate election. That was one of the recent things that we were looking into.
And you're still looking into that at this time?
You have it on a two-meeting deferral, and so they cannot come up until the next meeting.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Carroll? Sorry.
And by law, he is still on the board. He is on the board. Any member on any of the boards that are appointed stay until, if, if they are not reappointed, they stay until there is an appointment. So, Mr. Bassino is on the board at this point in time. Mr. Bassino has the ability to vote on anything that comes before the board. It is not as if he has put, been pushed off and has no ability to vote. Anybody who gave him that information has flat-out given him wrong information. So, he is on the board at this moment. He was on the board at the last board meeting. I presume he'll be there for the board meeting that is scheduled for Monday. He has the ability to vote. He has, he has all the qualifications and, and rights of any other member on that board at this point in time. And you all deferred it for two meetings, because there were some issues that were being looked into, and it comes up for a vote next, at the next meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Carroll?
Thank you, Madam President, and I'm, you know, thank you for Ms. Alessandro, for the attorneys, everybody for coming up, because I think we all got more information than we knew before that. For clarity, the gentleman is on the board. He is eligible to vote. And Ms. Fauché said this will be coming to our body in the next council meeting. So, we will address this in the next council meeting. He is able to vote, and he's on the board. So, thanks for that information. Thanks, everybody concerned, even if you should have known, and you didn't know, and now you know. So, we look forward to this, to putting this, you know, at the place where it should be at our next council meeting. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Carroll. Anyone else? Pastor Jackie Brown Cockerham, please approach. If you can state your name and your address.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. I'm Pastor Jacqueline Brown, Cockerham, 2610 Decatur Street, Kenner, Louisiana. That's apartment A. I am very concerned about what I've heard in here on today. And at this point, Veteran Heights is without a fire station. We don't have a fire station to protect us, and with everything that's about to go on. I would like to give my time to someone else from the fire department who wants to speak.
Unfortunately, you can't yield any of your time.
Okay. Well, I just want to say that we need an active and a respected and a department, a fire department, where the, where the employees are going to feel needed and necessary. We don't need anything going on, a strife, and then they can't get to do what they need to do because of things that are going on in the department. So, I would, I would really love to see something resolved here with the fire department and with this gentleman. I don't know him from a can of paint. I don't know the gentleman. But I know that we need to have a department that is comfortable, that is respected, and that's going to do their job when it needs to be done. So, consider what needs to be done in all of Kenner for all of the residents, and definitely look at Veteran Heights subdivision and Susan Park, because we are absolutely buck-necked without fire protection, to put it lightly. And thank you, Mr. Mohammed, for helping to clean up some things over there in Veteran Heights. Thank you very much, and Councilman Carroll.
Thank you, Ms., thank you, Pastor. Does, Councilmember Brennan?
Chief Terrence. Do you mind stepping up for a second, please? Is, are there any areas with the fire stations as they are now that are in jeopardy?
No, we don't have any areas that are in jeopardy right now.
So, there, there's no need for cause or alarm that people are not being protected, is there?
No, I think I spoke to Ms. Jackie a few months, a few months back, when I was in the chief's position prior, that the closing of the station is a necessary evil because of all the construction stuff going on. But we managed to staff the other stations with more members.
And, and our fire rating has just been improved in the last few months, so we wouldn't have gotten that if any of our citizens were in any kind of peril or jeopardy.
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. There, I believe there's, I believe there is a coverage, the areas that are... Yes, everyone, every neighborhood in Kenner is covered. I think that he clarified that. So, thank you, Councilmember Brennan. Mr. Thomas, I'm going to mispronounce this name, Catal, Catalano? Would you like to approach? Okay, thank you. Mr. Richard Brown? Okay, is there any other members of the audience that would like to speak before we adjourn? Okay, motion to adjourn.
So moved.